This is Ann.
Yep.
Welcome to the Big Walnut School Board Meeting. The mission of the Big Walnut Schools is to inspire and guide each student to his or her maximum potential. We'll have a call to order, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. And we'll have a moment for a personal reflection in silence, and then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, we'll take the roll call.
Mrs. Graziosi?
Here.
Mr. Crowell?
Here.
Mr. Duffy?
Here.
Mrs. Snicks?
Here.
Mr. Fuji is absent.
Item four, it is recommended the board approve the July 15th, 2024 Agenda as presented.
So move.
Second.
Take the vote.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Snicks?
Yes.
Mrs. Graziosi?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Five. It is recommended the board approve the minutes of the June 17th and June 24th, 2024 regularly scheduled meetings, and the June 21st and July 9th, 2024 special meetings.
I'll move second.
Take the vote.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Snicks?
Yes.
Mrs. Graziosi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moves us to item six, we have board recognition. We'd like to ask Autumn Newman to come up.
Hello, Ms. Newman.
Hi.
We want to congratulate you for certificate of recognition for a girl's shot put, but could you tell us a little bit about your story?
Okay, so I started throwing when I was in seventh grade, and it actually started as a punishment. I was forced to join track, but I tore my hamstring and ended up as a thrower. That's when I fell in love with it, and who knew I'd be good at throwing things? So, seventh grade, I had a wonderful season, broke both seventh grade records. Eighth grade, as you all know, COVID hit, I did not have an eighth grade season. Um, freshman year, I came in not knowing what to expect at all, and I still came out competing as hard as I could. And coming in around third to first nearly every single meet. Sophomore year, still an amazing season, PR. Junior year, I blew out my knee. So, it was an entirely recovery season based off of my ACL and my meniscus, which was overall a 12-month recovery process. And that's when I had my senior year. I came back swinging as hard as I could because I knew it was my last chance. So, when I came back, I came back with a vengeance, and I made it all the way to states.
Congratulations, we know you have perseverance, and you can get through anything. What's the farthest you've thrown?
Thirty-eight seven.
Thirty-eight seven, wow. Well, we want to congratulate you for participating in the track team and qualifying for state in shot put. Your hard work and dedication reflects great credit upon yourself, the Big Walnut School District, and the entire Big Walnut community. And I want to say you've always been such a wonderful young lady, and pleasant, and speak well, and I know you're gonna grow, go far. Maybe farther than you throw your shot put. Okay, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, that brings us to item seven, Superintendent's Report, Mr. McLean.
Yes, good evening, thank you. Up first, I'm gonna ask Mike Robertson to come up to the podium. He's going to share a little bit of an update on our K through five ELA adoption process, what that's going to look like, and obviously answer any questions that you may have. And then we'll also talk about the course novels and signed syllabus that will be implemented for the high school this upcoming school year. So, go ahead, Mr. Robertson.
Hello, thank you for having me. If it's okay. I'd like to flip the order of those, if that's not an issue. The, so first talking about signed syllabi at the high school and our course novels. So, over the course of this year, we gathered the current reading lists for all ELA classes from seventh grade through senior year. And I met with the middle school and high school English departments to discuss the novels that were part of our courses, novel selection philosophy, and just a discussion on the novels that are part of our course. Through that discussion, we established some protocols on books entering and exiting the syllabi for, or the, these courses, and also books moving from either whole class reads to choice reads, or choice reads to whole class reads. And the primary purpose of this is wanting to look at students' reading journey across their entire time at the secondary level to make sure that our books are hitting a broad variety of genres and settings, and are appropriate for the academic level, and are serving our instruction. The other reason is to increase curricular transparency, and then especially at the high school, to standardize the way in which we communicate the content of our courses, just to help with clarity and keep parents informed. So, as a result, in conversations with the high school administrative team, and their feedback from staff, Dr. Carter decided that a universal signed syllabus would be a good step to achieve those ends. So, starting next school year, the back page of every syllabus for, I get real, I'm bad at pluralizing syllabi, and knowing when to do it, I don't know why that is, but anyways, for every course at the high school has a syllabus, there you go. And the last page of that syllabus will now be standardized to have a bulleted list of the units that are covered in that course, and any course novels that are associated with that course to help make sure that parents are informed about the content of that course. The plan will be that a hard copy goes home with the student, a copy is emailed home directly to the parent, and then there'll be a building-wide communication that those syllabi are going home, and expected to be signed and returned. We'll then establish, well, we'll have established a deadline for them to be returned, and then do another reminder follow-up to parents if they haven't been returned. And so those are the steps we've taken to try to achieve those ends.
Is that the opt-in?
Yes.
That was compromised at last year's meeting?
Yeah, we don't have a live stream going on.
The, is it gonna be a list of the books, or is it gonna be individual?
It'll be a list of, if there's any books in the course, the books will be listed on the back page.
And is it gonna have any kind of warning for content of the book? That it might be objectable?
There's a general statement about those things in the top there. But nothing, like, the idea is that to list those things so that parents have a time to review them. Anything that they find objectionable or have questions about, they can indicate that and then communicate that with a teacher.
If the parent doesn't opt their child in, then what's the child do?
So, there are two levels to that. If the issue is with a choice book, there's really nothing they need to do, because they can just pick another book. For, for, for a book that is a part of a whole class read, it's the same as any other opt-out, which is an alternative assignment would be, would be made.
Say that again.
So, for a choice, a choice book, because there are multiple options, if there was an issue with one of the books, the student could just choose another book, it wouldn't require an alternate assignment, because the assignment can be supported by any of the books in the choice list. If it's a whole class read, which means the unit is based upon a single book, that is, every one in class is reading the same book, then that would be like a standard opt-out where an alternative assignment would need to be put in place.
I'll get back with you on it whether that satisfies my compromise or not.
Well, they, they wouldn't be opting into the book, so we would have to provide an alternative assignment for the student in that situation.
I'll review it and get back.
What committee brings this work to the board?
What's that?
Is this a, is this the work of a committee?
This was the work of myself, the administrators at the middle school and high school, and then the departments that I met with.
Okay, so it's not a board committee?
Hmm, nope.
But this is on, for vote, right? We're gonna be approving this curriculum, right?
No, it's not up for a vote, it's, this is just informing of the, of the policy.
Gotcha, okay.
Or up the practice, I guess, in that case, to be technical.
Still learning here.
Mr. Duffy, there was a board meeting, what would we say, a year ago?
A year and a half.
A year and a half ago, where we had issues about, talking about books, and there was a compromise made then for an opt-in form? And, in lieu-
The standard procedure back then was an opt-out.
Gotcha.
The compromise was to make it opt-in so that the parent had to participate, and notify, yes, this child can read this book. As an example, we had a parent come in three months ago, or two months ago, and the parent and the child read the book, and it had some objectable material in it, and I thought we had already initiated the opt-in. That would place the response, the parent has some responsibility here.
So this will have a list of all the course offerings, all the books? I'm sorry, I probably said it the wrong way.
No, you didn't, you, the second one was right, yeah. So, any novel that's associated with the course will be on that list. And the intent of this is to make sure that there's every opportunity for a parent to be informed early into the school year about what the content of our courses are, and be able to proactively raise a concern about those things so that we're not trying to handle that in the rearview mirror.
Not to belate it, but I don't want to give them the opportunity. I want to make it a requirement that they participate.
I think we, everyone in public education would love that, and most of our parents do, but when you're dealing with thousands of people, with thousands of, you know, situations going on in life, we know that we won't get 100% response to this. That's just not, that's never, if we achieve it this year, we'll have to take our show on the road, because we'll have achieved something that's never been done before in public service to get 100% response rate. So, I think when our discussions are, we want to make sure that everybody on the board feels comfortable at the level of communication. We will make every effort to get every signed syllabus back from every family for every course. But after we communicate, both individually, send a hard copy home, and do a full communication, and communicate with parents again once the deadline has been missed to let them know that specifically they have a syllabus that hasn't been returned, excuse me. There will be a handful of people we just don't hear back from, for any number of reasons. And at that point, that's when we have to decide when it's time for us to move on, and we've met our obligation to try to give everybody the opportunity to be involved.
But that was my point with making it an opt-in. If you didn't hear back from the parent, then they couldn't use that book. Now, if there's a choice of books, that I can understand, and you and I will have a conversation-
Okay.
-to make sure that this meets. I made a compromise that I have paid dearly for, okay? And a lot of people didn't see it my way, but I felt it was the best solution. I want to make sure that what I compromised is achieved.
I look forward to that conversation.
All right. So, in the handful of books that have graphic content, is it possible to put a warning out that has the graphic content, a sample of it? Up for the parents?
I think that we can point parents to resources. The hard thing is trying to anticipate what everyone would consider to be content, but I can discuss that with the high school staff and see how feasible that would be. My concern would be that if we do that, and we don't get it right every time, then that will be a reason for that to, you know, not then be considered fully informing. I think if we point them, there's many resources where you can look at summaries of, and the novel, the lists of books are not like massive, so I think that a person who's reasonably interested in making sure that they, that could fairly easy make that decision on their own. But I see what you're saying. I, I, there might be a reasonable level in which we could do that, or a way we could do it in a blanket statement. I'm just thinking through it, that would be my one concern. I wouldn't want them putting their faith in our ability to anticipate what they would find objectionable, and then feel as if they weren't informed because it wasn't indicated as such on the original syllabi. And I think this is the general crux of this issue is that, you know, certainly I think people have a range of beliefs, and we can do better to narrow down so that we're not having to do alternative assignments on a very frequent basis. I think we already live in that world generally, that it's not a highly frequent thing that happens, where we have to do alternative assignments for students. But I recognize the impact of that on the student and on the family, so I think we want to do better with respect to that. But similar to 100% response rate, at some point, there have always been topics, whether they're for specific religious beliefs or whatever, that even though they typically don't have a, an opt-out for a student because of their personal beliefs, this case does, and we have to find some alternative. Like, we're not going to be able to design a curriculum, and I'm not saying this is, we're trying to take steps to address it and improve, but we'll have to figure out how to deal with issues when they come up, where something in our content, even something in our standards conflict with someone's personal beliefs, and how to move forward in that. I think that just comes with the territory of serving a large number of people in a community.
So, is this the work of a committee? When Mr. Robertson talks about going back and talking to the, to the staff at the high school, is that, is that the curriculum committee, or?
No, it's just our admin team working with administrators and teachers, and our instructional facilitators.
Okay. Gotcha.
I'd like to sit in on that meeting.
Yeah, I think there would be some community members or parents that, are they invited to be in on those meetings, or?
Well, this is not really like, this is me meeting in my function with departments, so they're not, it's not similar to a committee meeting like that.
Okay.
I think the whole point of this is so parents would have feedback. But I think what we're trying to establish here is a process that the board feels comfortable with.
And will that be a board vote eventually?
I don't think so, no.
The, the opt-in form wouldn't be anything that would require a board vote. It'll just be a practice that we implement moving forward.
Okay.
And my hope that would be that we'll be able to work through that to a level that everybody feels is satisfactory, and is sustainable from an educational perspective, and keeps parents informed. So, just because it's not coming up for a vote doesn't mean it's something that we can't collaborate on.
Yeah, if it's something that is intended to, for the board to take action on, I would expect community members or parents to be able to participate during the process of, you know, negotiating those, those ideas.
That's not something that, in the seven years, that I've voted on. My only purpose in requesting, which I don't have to sit down with them, is I made the compromise. And it was a very lengthy meeting, so.
I would, I would also say that just because there's not a formal committee, and again, I'm not trying to avoid that if that's appropriate for us to do, but we're also well aware of a wide variety of perspectives on this. I don't know if the board feel like they're lacking for perspectives on the book issue from all angles. I feel like we have a lot of feedback from the community on a wide range of opinions on this. So, even though we don't necessarily convene a specific committee with parent representation, doesn't mean that we're not taking community and parent perspectives into consideration. In fact, I would say that's probably the primary driver around why we're trying to do this, is to try to take the feedback that we've gotten and find something that works for everybody as best as possible.
Got it. Doug, we, I'll follow up with you after you meet with Mr. Robertson then.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anything else on that topic before we move on?
I have one question. Would it be off of the infringing on copyrights to have hyperlinks to the books?
Uh, the actual texts, no, or yes, but.
Like a synopsis, maybe?
But no, there, I mean, you could go, there's a number of, we could actually look, again, I'm kind of-
I'm just throwing that out there.
I don't like to process necessarily in the middle of a board meeting, but just as my first thought is we could point parents to some readily available resources that help summarize the content of books and flag for content. And there's a number of sites that do that, and that might be an efficient way to make sure that parents have the tools to vet that content. Even though they wouldn't have, now, any parent can ask for a preview copy of anything that's in our curriculum, so, you know, if a parent wanted to actually preview the text, we, we could do that. And again, kind of doing this upfront and in a more formal and universal manner is to try to make those things possible, maybe before we get to those units. All right, are we ready for topic number two?
Let's go.
All right. I put together a short presentation on this only because I think the larger context around the science of reading helps kind of understand what the state is asking of us, and helps us understand how to interpret the resources and the list that the state has put out. So if you'll bear with me, we're gonna talk pedagogy for like, two minutes, tops. So, we are entering into a K-5 English Language Arts Resource Adoption, and we're doing that because the state of Ohio is mandating that all schools have resources in grades K through five that are aligned with the science of reading. And so what I hope to do today is to give you a little background on what the science of reading is, what our current reading resources are that are already in place, what the state exactly is mandating, the list of approved resources, because there is a finite list of approved resources that the state has put out, and our proposed timeline. And the goal around this is to make sure that by the time we have to go around and get a final list together, and then by the time we make a board recommendation, and everybody here and the community feels informed and aware of the process, and that we vet our resources early on to make sure we have time to adjust if adjustments are needed. So if you go to slide two, quick thing on the science of reading. So the science of reading is best summed up by what's called the simple view of reading. And it's this, that word recognition, your ability to see a word on the page and sound it out, either aloud or in your head, plus your understanding of what those words mean, is what comes together as reading comprehension. So that's what's called the simple view of reading. So if we go to the next slide, there are constituent skills in word recognition and language comprehension that build up the simple view of reading. So in word recognition, we call something phonological awareness, which is our ability to hear a sound, to split apart sounds. So we do a lot of splitting words into syllables, and then we also do a lot of splitting of words into their constituent sounds. So you might take a word like bat, and a student would be able to identify b, a, t. And then if we would say, switch the B to a C, they would be able to go cat. That's a very basic example. But a student's ability to actually hear sounds and split them apart is highly correlated with their ability to actually turn letters and words on a page into sound. Decoding is that, then, looking at the letters and being able to make the sounds that go along with them, and the letter combinations, and make those into words. And the other thing that serves us is sight recognition, those are words we just know based on sight. So that's the word recognition portion of this. The other half, and this is the one that's most relevant for what we're about to talk about, is language comprehension. So, language comprehension is actually a, a, a set of, what you can kind of categorize as five distinct skills that we use as readers when we encounter a word. The first thing is we bring our background knowledge, so we're familiar with the setting or the topic being talked about. There are many studies on this. The most famous one that's always cited is a baseball study, which was an experiment where good readers and not-so-good readers, kids who knew a lot about baseball and kids who knew nothing about baseball, had to read an excerpt about a play-by-play on a baseball field, and then move figures around to represent what was happening in the game. And what that study found was, poor readers who knew a lot about baseball did better on that task than good readers who didn't know anything about baseball. And what that tries to demonstrate is, part of what we're doing is drawing from our wealth of background knowledge when we read something. So if we read something that we're familiar with the setting of, that gives us a better opportunity to make sense of what we're, what we're reading. The second one's vocabulary, that's familiar to most people, that's the meaning of words in isolation. Language structures is what we would probably refer to as grammar, or the meaning of words within context of a sentence. The next one is verbal reasoning. So these are metacognitive strategies, questions we ask ourselves as reader, who, when they say she, what is that referring to? Oh, it's the person they mentioned in the previous sentence, because you usually introduce the subject before you assign a pronoun to it. So it's understanding, and then that's asking bigger questions, like, what is the character doing in this moment and why, what's their motivation? So that's verbal reasoning. And then finally, literacy knowledge, which is also known as like text knowledge. It's the difference between what a poem looks like versus a chapter book, versus a news article, versus academic study. So, all those different means of writing have kind of different conventions, like poems are organized in a certain way, or chapter books are organized in a certain way, citations are handled in this way. And our knowledge of what those different forms of writing come together to help us make sense of it. So that's kind of a rundown of the simple view of reading. This is a diagram called Scarborough's Rope, which is very popular in science reading. That kind of sets the table, but I want to pause for any questions you have so far. All right, I'll pat myself on the back for being really good at explaining stuff, and we'll move on to the next slide. The simple view of reading then, so again, word recognition, this is actually turning words into sound. We have really good resources already in place. Before me even coming to the district, the team has done a really excellent job in implementing our systematic phonics program, supported by Hagerty Foundations, and then Sunday System, which is a recent addition that is, if you are struggling to keep pace at grade level with your ability to turn letters and words into sounds that you can then make meaning of, is a, a program that we can support you growing in small group and one-on-one. So we actually have a wealth of resources already adopted, and the state on the list of approved resources has foundations, so we're already meeting the state's mandate by implementing that curriculum. And Sunday System is a part of their approved list of remedial resources. So, we already have in place and have done training on two resources that fulfill our requirement for the state already. While it can't be a guarantee, I would highly encourage we try to do our search in a way that leaves these in place because of the monetary amount of, the amount of money we put into buying those, and also training teachers in implementing those things. So while that's not necessarily something we have to be 100% on, there's a big cost to changing these things, and they're already in place. So, I would say we start with a search that keeps these in place. Can we go to the next one? Currently, we have teacher-designed and curated resources to handle all that bottom part of Scarborough's Rope, the language comprehension side. And why I wanted to point that out is because this helps us know what we're primarily looking for in our resource adoption. We're looking for a curriculum that allows, or a curricular resource that addresses those five strands at the bottom. And this, so what we're looking for is something that helps our students read stories and make sense of them, and discuss their reasoning, and learn vocabulary, learn grammar, build their background knowledge as they read, and become stronger readers through their metacognitive and reading strategies. Pause there, because that's kind of letting you know what we're looking at, and then we can start to look at what the state has and where the lists are. Any questions about that so far? All right. Moving on to the next slide. So, again, as I said, Foundations and Sunday System are already in place. The state has put out three lists. The first is what they call core foundational skills. Again, that's that systematic phonics. We already have two resources in place, one that every student gets, and one that students who need additional help get. So that's already in place. The other two lists are the core no foundational skills. That doesn't do any of the phonics stuff, it just does that red portion we talked about, the language comprehension. And then there's a third list of core comprehensive resources. These are the state's terms, and if you go onto the website, you'll see these three lists. Core foundational skills, core no foundational skills, and core comprehensive. The third list are programs that do both. Now, we can select- Now, we can select, uh, keeping foundations and Sunday System in place, we can select something from the core no foundational skills list, or we can select something from the core comprehensive list, provided that we can kind of slice out the foundational skills portion of it. And there are some resources that you can do that, you can even purchase it without those components in place. So when we're looking for a resource, we're looking for a resource on either of those two lists. Next slide. So these are the lists that are approved by the state, so this is the list of resources we can consider for our adoption. And again, this list is on, uh, the Ohio Department of Education workforce's website, but I just typed it out, uh, for everyone to reference here. You'll notice there are two in bold. These are ones that I've already made contact with and requested physical copies of. The reason being, we already implement other things from this publisher in our curriculum at the K-5 level. And so that doesn't mean we need to, we need to adopt either one of those, but it's probably something we'd want to take a look at because we already have some of those things in place. So for Amplify Core Knowledge, we currently use M-Class through Amplify, which is the digital version of a reading assessment called Dibbles, that all of our students K-3 take. And so it made sense to, uh, at least request preview copies from that publisher since we already have some of their products in our district. The other one that's bolded is Wit and Wisdom there on the core no foundational skills list. Wit and Wisdom is unique in this respect because Wit and Wisdom aligns with foundations. So it already pairs with the current, um, foundational skills resource we already have in place. Wit and Wisdom is also the publisher of Geodes, which we purchased at grades 1 and 2 last year. So again, not that we have to adopt Wit and Wisdom, but because we already implement some of those curricular materials in our school, it's probably one we'd want to take a look at. So our goal will be to whittle this list down to the ones that we think are interesting and might fit our district, order preview copies of those, so everyone has an opportunity, both on the board, our staff, and the community have an opportunity to vet those resources. And then, so I'll go on to our timeline next, but before I do that, any questions about the list? All right, last two slides. So we do have to implement this at some point during the 24, 25 school year, and for those keeping track at home, that's this school year. So it's a tight timeline. The state, by the way, didn't send out their first version of this required list until February of this year. And they didn't, it's still not final, so vendors can still apply for inclusion on the list, but it's been amended in upper times since then. So what you have is the most current version of the list, but that list has changed over the past couple months. So while it is a short timeline, it really wasn't something we could start a whole lot sooner than this, because we didn't know what we would have to be vetting. Implementation at some point in the year really means we have the materials in our district, and we need to be piloting them at least. So we don't necessarily need to land on a decision and implement, like in January this year, but we at least need to have physical copies in our classrooms being vetted through a pilot process at some point during the school year. So I'll go on to our timeline, which is the last slide. Our goal would be to create a committee in August, in September, establish a long list, and review hard copy materials. So our, our goal would be by September for the board, for, uh, community feedback, for staff input, to get us down to the ones we want to bother publishers to send us hard copies of. And, and they also typically send digital previews and things like that. We would then have our potential long list candidates with sample materials available for not only our staff committee, but for the board and for the public to review and give feedback on. The goal then, from September to November, so over those two months, to establish a short list, because it takes a decent amount of time to organize a formal pilot, get teachers who are volunteering, making sure we have representation across the buildings that would be impacted. We could be in great shape and decide, oh, we know which one we want to try, and we're good to go, but probably we'll end up piloting one, two, maybe three resources from there. So we'd want to establish that list by November to give us two months to put together a pilot. That pilot would happen from January. We'd get feedback primarily January, February, and March, and then be able to bring something to the board for approval in April. So that's our proposed timeline, and that's all the information I have on that particular topic. I would love to get any questions you have.
Sounds like a new committee's coming.
Yes.
Or is it an existing one that?
It would be a new committee.
Well, thank you. You've done a lot of work, and it's exciting, and I understand, you know, we're held by the state guidelines to have this preview in place, or, um, like you said, piloting this, so we've got work to do.
We do have work to do. All right, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I will invite Megan Forman up. She's got an update on HR.
Real quick, before you start, I'm sorry, it, do we know why the meeting's not being livestreamed?
It's being recorded.
The website says that the meeting is being livestreamed, and I guess it's not. So I, I was just wondering if there's a reason it's not, or if it was a technical issue, if anybody knows anything. They've always been livestreamed.
Okay.
Thanks, Wayne. But, you know, the special meeting wasn't, uh, livestreamed either last week, I don't believe. Two weeks ago? Thank you.
Perfect, awesome. HR. Well, thank you. Good evening, Board of Education, Mr. McLean and Mr. Gooding.
I need to get your mic working.
We can hear you.
Well, I can be pretty loud, so let me know.
Come on, girl.
Anyways, as, as much as I loved hearing about, as a former elementary teacher, elementary principal, and, uh, obviously a huge proponent of early literacy, I get to talk to you about a few HR things. If you guys recall, I was tasked with, in terms of coming to this role, part of the offboarding process, we've expanded, and it was at the Board of Education, asked to add an, an exit interview to employees who are exiting, choosing to exit the district. So just as a quick reminder, obviously, as all of you know, our district is roughly 100 and, you know, over 100 square miles. Within that, we service about 4,400 students pre-K through 12. That includes our deferred graduates as well as online folks. Within that, there's roughly 550 employees that service us. That includes DAC, ESC, et cetera. So when we look at just Big Walnut employees, it's about 480. Within that, as folks resign, retire, you know, choose to exit the district, there's an offboarding process. So it's, hey, in terms of, you know, pay, benefits, et cetera, et cetera. And so we've added this exit interview. However, it is strictly voluntary, so it is, as part of the offboarding process, they are asked to please schedule an exit interview, just simply over the phone. They're welcome to come in. People have come in, we've sat and had a cup of coffee, it's been fantastic. I'd say majority of them are over the phone. At this timeframe, we are averaging about 70 to 75% participation rate within that. I'll be honest, once we reach out with the offboarding, typically depending, we'll go ahead and reach out one follow-up time. After that, we don't. So there is, just so you know, in terms of basically this data that I've been asked to share, or summation, I should say, my personal notes, is roughly within that. So reasons for leaving, you know, moving closer to family, many recently for childcare reasons. Maybe a spouse's transfer, taking a position closer to their home for those who don't reside in the district. Some of them are taking a position in a larger district for more money or more professional growth opportunities. And also, we have some who've had some frustration either with the district or for the, and/or the board. I will say that there is constantly, though, a resounding love for our district and Big Walnut and the people who they worked with, in terms of their follow-ups. Even if they're leaving for something they're unhappy with, they typically are resounding with that. Just to give quick, when we look at, uh, breakdowns in terms of, um, I'll say different classifications, as we look at, and, and this is, I'm probably stating the obvious because obvi, you know, you all are looking at the board agendas and you're recognizing what you're approving. So you're probably noticing some trends. So for instance, in our food service, there's not a lot of movement. When there is, it's typically a retirement, maybe someone who's shifting to something with more hours, depending, but there's not a lot of in and out on that. We look at our Big Walnut, our BWPSS, which is obviously secretaries, EAs, et cetera, you don't see a lot of movement in our secretaries. Maybe it's someone who, when there is, is there's a retirement, and there's a part-time secretary who then transitions over to a full-time, depending on the building, because obviously we, we still have a lot of, uh, family feeling and cultures within our building, so some people sit tight. I will say, you probably see a more fluid motion sometimes with our educational assistants. And I will give a shout-out to Ross, Mr. Ross Linscott, our, um, Director of Student Services, because every spring, he sends out a survey to all of our EAs, asking them if they, for feedback in regards to their current position, their location, and if they have something like, hey, would they like to stay where they're at, or would they like to go someplace else? So maybe they got hired in the district and they're doing something with 504 or IEP needs, but hey, they feel a strong calling to go work one-on-one with a particular student. They can request that. So sometimes you see a little bit more, uh, fluidness there. But again, part of that is compliments of Mr. Linscott, asking them, hey, what are your preferences? That way, as folks, you know, reflect and think about who, what they've been doing, who they're working with. That's helpful. The other piece would be custodian, as we look at custodians, our maintenance folks, mechanics, you'll see that in our drivers, you'll see that with our maintenance and our mechanics. There's a lot of, not a lot of movement there. Again, it's a retire, you know, maybe a retirement, and someone else within that union wants to go over and bid for that particular position. The other piece would be naturally, as custodians, maybe I get hired in a, a second shift position, but I would prefer first shift. So maybe you'll see some fluidity there in terms of movement, but typically not a higher turnover. I will say, though, however, that particular pool is very shallow, just like with our drivers. Our, I would say our drivers, I would say, when we think about people who have been exiting from those positions, it's primarily been from either personal reasons, um, a retirement, or deciding, hey, this is not, uh, my seat on the bus. Pun intended, no pun intended, at the same time. All of that being said, for those who love numbers, basically, as a quick breakdown on my percents, 36.3% are, have exited pursuing other opportunities, 27.5 for retirement, 8, 8.7% were unhappy with the position, and 4.9 were either unhappy with the district and/or the board. Again, that's a very brief, like, higher lines overview of those exit interviews that I've been asked to conduct, based on those who are willing to participate. Certainly, if you have any questions, reach out via email, and happy to provide any additional info from my personal notes. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. An, an update on, on transportation. And, and if you've looked at the agenda, you can see, um, we're, we're losing our Transportation Director, Tim Wagner. But in, in meeting with him and, and working through, um, different ways to route the buses for both the secondary and the elementary routes, we're fairly optimistic that we are going to be able to reduce those non-transportation zones that we originally published, uh, a few months back. I'm not willing to commit to that right now in terms of these people will have busing reinstated, but obviously, once I feel comfortable that we're going to be able to do that, we will, we will get that transport, or we will get that information out. We do have, I don't want to say influx, but we have, we have received interest, and, and we have someone on the agenda tonight to go through the van driver training program, which then leads to an individual getting their school bus CDL, and that's been a culmination of our advertising efforts. And again, I, I want to thank Mrs. Nix for her work on working with, uh, the mayor of Galena, some local businesses, getting some locations for us to park a bus with banners. I believe we've had six individuals reach out. I think we're going to end up having four signed on, uh, before the start of the school year. That won't fix the problem day one, because it takes about two months to go through that training process. But again, if we can get four more individuals that are able to drive a, a school bus by October, we will obviously reinstate, uh, busing, uh, to every extent that we possibly can. And then finally, just a, a Cliff Notes version of what's on the agenda for this evening. 11.3, this is the contract to purchase new Chromebooks. It's a few more Chromebooks this year than in previous years, and that has to do a little bit with the grade band shift. However, the total dollar amount's not that far off, uh, from what we've, uh, purchased in the past. We've got the annual contract with ESC for, ESC of Central Ohio, a program with the Delaware County Juvenile Court, declaring transportation to be impractical for certain students. We're required to, uh, transport students whether they attend Big Walnut or, uh, a private school if it's within, I believe, a 30-minute drive of what their home school would be. So there are instances where perhaps only three or four kids attend one of those schools. It's not practical for us to send a bus, so we pay, make a payment, and that payment is based off of the average cost, uh, to transport a student, as determined by the state. I believe it's around $583. So that, uh, you'll be approving, I'll be recommending for you to approve that list, uh, this evening. Some donations, the handbooks, obviously, I, I think are a big one. And then HR, we've got a couple, uh, teachers that we were able to snag at the July 10th deadline, as well as, uh, that bus driver that I had mentioned before. Unless there's any questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you.
All right, takes us to number eight, Treasurer's Report.
All right, exciting stuff here.
Yes.
As I shared at last meeting, I think I was projecting that our revenue was going to come in about 1.2% overestimate. And because of what I do, I'm very, very detailed. So I'd like to say I nailed it exactly, but I have it at 1.16%. So, the good thing is, is revenue was up, um, as I said, 1.16%, or $681,576.38 over what the estimate was for the year. Some of the major contributors to that was additional catastrophic aid that we apply for through the Ohio Department of Educational Workforce. That's about $31,400. Additional interest and investments were up versus what we had projected, which is great. And in our insurance program, we had what was built in as a contingent insurance, um, premium credit. So when we renewed, um, with Blue Cross, um, in January into calendar year 2024, because of that renewal, there was a calculation that went into effect, and that brought us, um, $565,786 to the district, which was, uh, which is great. So those were the major drivers on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, I thought we'd be about 3% under budget. Again, I underestimated that, which was good, so it was 3.17% under budget. Or, uh, the equivalent of that is 1, 1,662,464.59. The major drivers here were professional technical services, our utilities, tuition that is deducted from our, our funds that, for, tuition to go to other districts. So students that reside here but are educated elsewhere, some of those will move rentals. So just in that, in those categories, we expended 87.76% of that budget. But what we, the, another piece to it is, so that's what was actually paid out during FY '24. So I also look at it to make sure what was expended and encumbered, so we have purchase orders, but it's just a timing issue that we've obligated those funds for some sort of service or product. We just haven't paid it prior to the end of June. So when I look at it from an expense and an encumbered standpoint, we spent or encumbered 97.62% of that. So there's a significant difference between 87% to 97. We were also under in instructional office supplies. We had spent 90.83% of that budget, but we had spent and encumbered 97.5% of that. We did have a small amount in the budget for building improvements. We spent 60.95% and had spent and encumbered 62.07% of that. So when you take those, you know, the overage in the revenue, the underspending on the budget side, our cash balance at the end, June 30th, 2024, improved by $2,344,049.97. So, great news at the end of the year for us, which will obviously, we'll take that, we'll update that into our forecast, and when we come back in November, you'll see these actuals built into that forecast, which is going to improve the, the bottom line or the cash balance of the forecast.
So that, that 2 million is above what the estimate was in May?
Correct. For the ending cash. So one of the, and one of the things going forward from a process standpoint that, that I want to look at is I want to, a lot of times, districts will look at, look at these numbers at the end of the year and say, hey, here's how we did, and I want to go beyond that, because if the numbers were reversed, if we were 1.16%
Wrong.
under on revenue, we'd have as much money coming in. If we over-expended, then we're now, instead of 2.3 million to the positive, we're 2.3 million to the negative. So I'm looking at those two different types of errors of the estimate, if you will. One of the things that I would like to do is, at least on a quarterly basis, sit down with building and department, budget managers and go through that, because I don't want to wait till the end in the event there is a problem, which hopefully we never do. But we look at that, go, are we, are we on track or are we off track? Do we need to make some adjustments? Do we need to maybe reallocate some funds within the budget to do some things that we need to do? And those are just ongoing conversations, because I would rather, I want to cash something early as opposed to wait to the end and, and
Right.
and hope and pray that we get it right.
Thank you. Ryan, I think you spoke one time about realigning...
Thank you. Ryan, I think you spoke one time about realigning our staffing plans.
Yeah, that, we're going to submit to you a five-year staffing plan. The goal is at the November board meeting, which will align with the treasurer's five-year forecast. That way, his forecast is based on what our projections are going to be. So that's what we're working on now. And instead of sharing it on a year-by-year basis, as I've done the past two years, I will share what our projection is for the next five years. And again, we'll make adjustments to that. I would foresee in line with the five-year forecast, so I'll present one to you in November, and then again, another one to you in the spring, so that the numbers he's projecting are based off of what we are actually planning.
And we did that work with the May forecast, too. For me, I'm all about the five-year planning, and you're looking at typically your five-year strategic plans, your five-year staffing plans, your five-year budgeting plans, and putting those all together. And then in June, when we did the special meeting on the capital plan, we looked at that from a five-year standpoint, too. So really trying to bring all of those different things that we're looking at and aligning them. Is there any other questions on the financial reports?
No.
And just an update, since our last meeting in June, we've had six new additional, six new public records requests that have come in, ranging from staff emails to purchasing records that, you know, a vendor will submit, or purchasing records that they'll put on a database that's out there. So there's some vendor piece. So we just, and some communications that have been going on, so just six new ones that we have.
Thank you. That brings us to item nine. Ryan, do you have any committee reports?
I don't, from my end, no.
Okay.
What about, is Wayne back there? I'm just following up on the live stream. My wife's at home asking if she's going to get to watch.
Basically, it'll be posted later on. Last week, we didn't, we didn't use, we didn't stream, so I used the wrong template. But if I were to stop it right now, we lose the first part, but it is recording, so I'm just going to post it after the meeting.
So it'll be livestreamed for the next meeting?
Well, we said that it's only streamed, so we'll talk about it later.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving on, number ten, do we have any public participation?
Mrs. Graziosi, we have five.
Okay. This is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the social or the school district's business, and is not considered a public community meeting. This is a time for public participation during the meeting, as indicated in the agenda. Please reference the criteria for public participation, which is attached to the agenda. And Wayne, could we get the, I think he's coming up for the timer?
Yes.
All right. Here he comes.
He's getting his steps in.
He's getting it.
All right, the first one is Linda Wagner.
Good evening. My name is Linda Wagner. My husband and I have lived in this district for twenty-eight years and had two children graduate from Big Walnut schools. This board recognizes the role of the board as financial stewards of the money entrusted to the schools by the taxpayers of this district. Excuse me. Because of this commitment, Big Walnut should join the two hundred and seventy-five school districts across Ohio filing a challenge to the constitutionality of private school vouchers. Those districts include Central Ohio districts of Westerville, Worthington, Upper Arlington, Bexley, Columbus, Reynoldsburg, Hannah, and Canal Winchester. The one billion dollars that are the annual price tag for private school vouchers comes from the same line item in the budget that pays for public schools like ours. Thus, a dollar more for private school vouchers is literally a dollar less for schools like our public schools here. This will place a greater tax burden on local property owners and businesses, increasing the urgency of future levies. Why should we be concerned? Well, in our district alone, from fiscal year twenty-three to twenty-four, there was a one thousand seven hundred and eighty-six percent increase in voucher use. Since there is no cap on state available spending, who knows how high this will go. The lack of a corresponding change in Big Walnut schools enrollment suggests that the vouchers are being used as a rebate for those folks who already have their children enrolled in private schools. The voucher money is substantial. For students in K through eight, vouchers are six thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars. And for those in high school, the vouchers are eight thousand four hundred and seven dollars. Compare those numbers to the two thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars that represents what the state gives Big Walnut per pupil, and you can see that Big Walnut students receive thousands of dollars less than what the private school vouchers provide. The cost for the school district to participate in this action is two dollars per student, meaning that it costs less than one voucher for Big Walnut to participate. This board owes it to the taxpayers whose money is entrusted to them to at least investigate the impact of these vouchers on our Big Walnut school district. Thank you.
Next is Lisa Wheeler.
Sorry. Turning fifty makes you fall apart. You need readers. My name is Lisa Wheeler, and I come to you from the land of the shiny new roundabout. We moved to Big Walnut from Westerville nine years ago. A big factor in our decision was the stellar reputation of the schools. We currently have a student in the high school and one in the middle school are going into. I came to talk about my concern about LifeWise, and how as a Christian, I feel our district could do better. Several things have come out in recent months about the organization and their practices. They hired a director for an Ohio program who had been terminated as a teacher for sexting a student. Given our district's unfortunate similar occurrence recently, this is something that we need to avoid being associated with. They are currently suing a former volunteer for copyright infringement for sharing their curriculum. They received over thirteen million dollars in contributions in two thousand twenty-three, according to their filings. But I was not able to find any more detailed information about any of that. In an era where the overwhelming, there's an overwhelming call for transparency, I would expect this to be a red flag. I want to thank Beth Daniels, the director for the Big Walnut program, for clearing up how this last year's rollout went and how local issues were handled. I think she and her local staff love their students and just want to share their faith and their love of Jesus. My concern is with the third-party organization. My concern should not be blamed on not agreeing with the beliefs. I was baptized and did communion in the Lutheran church. Throughout our children's lives, they have participated in Owana Sunday School, youth group, and my youngest is currently at church camp. I fully support our local churches creating an after-school program for students and family. I also fully support parents having the choice to do that. I just ask that the school district reassess whether during the school day and going through LifeWise is how we should be doing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Barb Shelby.
Hello, I'm Barb Shelby. Oh, am I good?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay. And I'm a resident of the Big Walnut School District. And this was not, it's fortuitous, serendipitous, I guess, that I come to you as a citizen, thinking about some things that we've seen about staffing, and that we had the report from Ms. Foreman tonight. So as the twenty-three, twenty-four academic year and the fiscal year were coming to an end recently, it appeared that the lists of resignations and retirements in the human resources section of the Board of Education's meeting agenda were getting notably longer. In looking at the meeting minutes for the last several years, and while this was not an exact science, I came to these information just through public resources, it is clear, though, that Big Walnut is losing more and more employees. As could be gleaned from the public information available, in fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty-one, there were thirty-six resignations and retirements. In fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, there were sixty. The next year, fifty-three. And this past year, which ended just a few weeks ago, that number seventy-two. With approximately, I'm using four hundred and five employees, different from others, that's from the National Center for Education Statistics, that's nearly an eighteen percent turnover in that one year. And if you combine those three years, if you look at it with certain data, it's a forty-five percent three-year rate. Yes, we've heard of the great resignation, but Ohio Job and Family Services Labor Information's most recent data, which was two thousand twenty-one, showed that the industry turnover rate for educational services occupations in Delaware County was about ten percent, and this was at the height of the COVID pandemic. So what might this mean? There are extensive training time requirements and the associated stress on mentors and managers when there are large numbers of new employees. It can be difficult to recruit new employees when the district has a reputation for high turnover. This can lead to low morale and lack of a sense of belonging when there's a revolving door of personnel. Of course, there are always some, is always some turnover for a whole variety of reasons, and new employees can bring new energy, current information, and new ideas. But what ultimately is that cost and the effect on our student experiences when a foundational level of stability isn't maintained with a consistent staff? Why are people leaving? That's your exit interviews. The district's most valuable asset is its people, with approximately eighty percent of the budget going to wages and benefits. It's important that the board continue to spend time and resources to determine why this is happening. Please continue to report back to the community and develop mechanisms such as an employee satisfaction survey that can improve this situation for students, staff, and our district families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Angie Stuksberry.
Good evening.
You're very good.
Okay. I just want to make sure. All right. First, I just, I want to thank those people in the room for your continued commitment. Mr. Gooding, you have been so amazing in talking math without it coming across as math, and dealing with student council, and the Red Edwards relay, and all those issues. And, you know, Mr. McLean, I thank you for, at pretty much any time, you know, if you're not in the high school, you're responding, you clearly care. And for the board members, obviously, you are here because you care. And I think we don't spend enough time celebrating the positives in our district. Ms. Autumn Newman, tonight is one, but we have so many other students like Autumn. There are so many students doing so many amazing things. And there's also staff. Going into the high school, the custodians and the maintenance have already been in there, and it is so clean. In the elementary schools, I have a daughter who's so excited going into third grade and teaching at Beatty, and every day I get new Amazon orders. I don't know where she's getting the money from, for all the supplies that she's buying, but that is what is happening. Teachers are already in their rooms. We are preparing. And with all of that positive, I also am struck with a comment that my mother made. And she wanted me to go into medicine. And I said, Mom, I'm going to be a teacher ever since fourth grade. My sister went into medicine, and she said, well, if that doesn't work, she can always teach. I have another sister who went into the legal field. And my mother said, again, if that doesn't work, she can always teach. And anything that my mother has said... And she's not alone. Because I wouldn't dream of attempting to tell a farmer how to plant crops or what crops he should plant. I've flown on airplanes, but I wouldn't attempt to try to tell the pilot how to fly the plane, or what type of plane we should be running. Just because you've went through school, just because you've tutored, we've all been through it. Not everyone can teach, and there needs to be more respect.
And the final speaker is Molly Snodgrass.
Hello, it's me again, Molly Snodgrass. I am a resident of the district and the parent of a first grader at Souters, an preschooler who will start there in two thousand twenty-six. I spoke at last month's meeting on the topic of the board's rejection of the Reveal Math curriculum. I was decidedly angry at last month's meeting, as you probably could tell. I'm going to try to be more constructive in my message to the board tonight. Between last month's meeting and tonight's meeting, I reviewed copies of public records that had been provided in the form of emails related to the Reveal Math curriculum. After reviewing the email correspondence through May twenty-third, what struck me is that only three individuals had indicated concern over the Reveal Math curriculum. One individual, in addition to the committee of twenty Big Walnut staff, indicated support of it. So I have a question. Does the board really base district-wide decisions on the complaints of three individuals? Wouldn't a more appropriate response to those three emails have been something like, quote, "Thank you for bringing these concerns to my attention. I've discussed these in depth with our Director of Academic Achievement. I have been assured that the inclusion or lack thereof of any SEL content was not a factor that the curriculum committee used to evaluate the different options, and that it did not influence their unanimous recommendation of Reveal Math. Our Director of Academic Achievement has further expressed confidence in the ability of the Big Walnut staff to implement the Reveal Math curriculum without allowing any SEL content to be used as a vehicle for imparting beliefs or values that go beyond the responsibility of schools and public institutions. If you have concerns on an individual level for how this curriculum might be taught to your student, please first work directly with your student's teacher to alleviate those concerns," end quote. By the way, part of that theoretical response comes directly from a very well-written email from Mike Robertson himself to Ms. Nix and Ms. Graziosi. Something like that seems like a much more level-headed approach than to take those three individual complaints and use them to bolster personal opinions about what a math curriculum ought to look like. The fact of the matter is that twenty educational professionals spent months evaluating numerous curriculum options across criteria such as scope and sequence, differentiated lessons, overall rigor, math fluency, assessments, and ease to implement. As was stated before, the recommendation of Reveal Math, based on these criteria, with no mention of SEL, was unanimous. What this board has done is flatly ignore that recommendation, because board members' personal beliefs were allowed to bear more weight than that of dozens of professionals in the field of education, a background which few members of this board possess. I continue to firmly believe that this board is failing in its duty to focus on items of universal concern to the district, and instead is micromanaging the superintendent and its staff, eroding trust, and sowing discord to the detriment of the district, and allowing board members' personal agendas to drive too many board actions of little actual importance. The Big Walnut School District, in the coming ten to twenty years, will grow and change dramatically. I would love if the board could focus instead on building a sense of community, establishing a vision for the future, and planning for the long-term success of this district. The quality of my children's education depends on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more, Scott?
Nope.
Okay. That brings us to business items. I move for unanimous consent from business items eleven-one through eleven-thirteen. No seconds?
Did you say eleven-thirteen?
Yes.
I'm still reading. You need a second?
Need a second.
I'll give you a second. I'll give you a whole minute. I'll give you a whole minute.
All right. Discussion? No discussion? Take the vote?
Mrs. Graziosi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Motion carrying?
Okay, that brings us to item eleven fourteen.
So now we'll go back, now we'll go back and vote on the consent.
Oh, yeah, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Yep.
Mrs. Graziosi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Motion carrying?
Okay, now that brings us to eleven fourteen. It is recommended the board approve the contact between Big Walnut Local School District Board of Education and Centero for the purpose of providing additional behavioral health services to referred students in the amount of three days per week. This is, this is in addition to the services provided by Centero through the Delaware Marrow Mental Health and Recovery Services Board Prevention that is provided by Big Walnut and no cost. Mr. McLean, could you explain a little bit of that to us?
Did we, did we get a...
Motion, a second.
A second, yeah, we'll wait for the discussion.
So moved.
I second it. Time for discussion.
Okay, so we provide, or I'm sorry, we receive services from the Delaware Marrow Mental Health and Recovery Services Board. That is through Centero. That's been in place since before I got here, and we do not pay for that. It's a part of a grant that, that organization, Delaware Marrow Mental Health, receives. In addition to that, we, this board approved, I can't remember if it was January, February, feel like it was sometime in that vicinity, a group called NIAP. And again, there's no fee from the district to that. And that was to give families an alternative so that they didn't feel like Centero was their only option. And there were some other things that they were able to do that Centero was not. And then, and again, this was prior to my arrival. The district contracted with a group called Ohio Guidestone to provide additional behavioral resources. The district did pay for that. I want to say approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, somewhere in that ballpark. This past year, Ohio Guidestone, like many, many different organizations, had struggles with staffing and were not able to provide all of the days that, that we were wanting. So we decided to go our separate ways. So what this contract would be doing would be with Centero, in addition to what is being paid for by the Delaware County Marrow Health, this would be a contract for the district for point six FTE to replace what we were originally contracted with Ohio Guidestone at a significantly lower dollar rate. I believe this contract would be fifty-eight thousand dollars, fifty-eight thousand, six hundred, twenty-one. And again, this would still require parental permission. The only exception would be if a student was in a crisis situation. Obviously, the primary concern would be for the student first and then contacting the family shortly thereafter. But essentially, it's an opt-in, no one's being forced to participate in this. Just an option for families if their kid is in need.
How much of an addition is this?
In terms of dollars, staffing?
It says three days a week. What were we offering?
Similar, I think it was a similar three days from Ohio Guidestone, but the cost was higher.
So this is three additional days to Centero?
This would be additional counselors coming in for three days a week.
So you're saying this makes up for what we've lost with Guidestones?
Correct.
And Guidestones couldn't provide last year? Did they fall out of the...
They, I mean, they, they had individuals that were coming, but not as frequently as we were wanting them to be available or needing them to be available. So we didn't end up paying the full one hundred and twenty thousand. So we weren't paying for a service, we weren't receiving. But the original budget, I believe, was in that ballpark. And again, the budget for this one is fifty-eight thousand, six twenty-one.
Were they in contract to provide three days a week?
I, I don't know the details of that offhand.
And when's this contract have to be implemented?
Well, by implementing it now, it gets it set up before the start of the school year. Our next board meeting, I think, is August eighteenth, which is the Monday before school, but that would, I'm sure, some processing time on their end.
Has our contract expired with Guidestone?
Yes, at the conclusion of this past school year.
Is there any other companies that can provide that service?
I, I don't know the answer to that. I'm, I'm sure there are, but I don't...
Well, this predates you, but there was quite the controversy.
Correct.
The only reason Centero was here is because it was free. Now you're saying we need to go into contract with them.
Well, I'm, I'm presenting that to you all.
Or you want an answer tonight?
I mean, if, if it's a no, I'd rather, I'd rather it be a no tonight than a no August eighteenth.
Well, it doesn't have to be a no. I need to do a little more research, and I think you do too, to see if there's somebody else that can provide the service. Right?
Yep, I, I'll have a meeting with Ross tomorrow.
I move that we postpone, make a motion to postpone, not necessarily to the next scheduled meeting, but to our next meeting. So if we have a special meeting, we can take it up.
Second.
If I say the next scheduled meeting, then we can't take it up before we get to the next meeting.
Okay, take a vote.
Hold you get a second on?
Yeah.
Exactly, exactly.
I didn't hear it.
So this is a motion to postpone till the next meeting.
Correct. Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graziosi?
Yes.
Motion carrying?
Okay, this brings us to eleven fifteen. It is recommended the board approve the following twenty-four, twenty-five handbooks. And we are looking at elementary, middle school, high school, and employee. And it is to, a little... Stop right there. Need a second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion. So this is, we have, we're coming in, talking about the cell phones, the electronic devices. This would be the options. It's kind of an à la carte for us to decide tonight. And I will read this, and this can be determined by grade band or the whole school. But we have options here tonight. So the first one is a students, A. Students are not permitted to use cellphone, tablets, laptops, smartwatches, or any other electronic devices, related devices in school and/or classrooms. Exceptions will be made for accommodations listed in students' IEP five oh four plan or to monitor or address a health issue or concern. Option B, students are not permitted to use cellphone, personal cellphones, tablets, laptops, smartwatches, or any other electronic devices, related devices in school and/or classrooms during instructional period. Exceptions will be made for accommodations listed in students' IEP plan, five oh four plan, or to monitor or address a health concern. Do we have any discussion on this or questions?
And again, just to clarify, we, we would do it by school, or we could do it by district. We wouldn't do it by individual grade level. So we could have one policy for elementary. So we've got three different student handbooks. We've got pre-K through grade five, which is the ELC, the elementary schools, and BWI. We have the middle school, which is grade six through eight, and we have the high school, which is nine through twelve. So the board could adopt the same policy for all three of those, or they could adopt one option for one or two grade bands and a different option for a third or any combination of those. But we wouldn't do kindergarten and first grade would have one, second and third would have a different. We would want to keep it consistent for that building.
My apologies. So I could ask this in a certain way to see how we want to go about this. Does anyone else have any discuss, questions? I have...
I, I don't think I'm still clear on what, if this is, if these handbooks are available to the public before it goes to vote, or if, if there's any, if that's done intentionally or not. I'm just curious if this, if the handbooks are, if, if public is able to review in advance of the meeting.
We, we've never done that previously.
Gotcha.
So the last year's handbook is available, and I provided you with these handbooks, I think, June thirteenth.
But they're not attached to the agenda as links?
They were in an email.
They were in an email to us, as the board.
To me, but not to the public. I'm just clarifying, that's all.
Correct.
I didn't see a link, okay.
Okay. So I have a, I have a thought of how to do this. We could vote by us. Elementary and intermediate, pre-K through fifth grade, option A or option B. And then I could go through the school, all the handbooks that way. Would anyone have a problem going that way? No? Okay.
Well... And what? You're confusing me.
Uh huh.
When would they be allowed, if ever, to use a cellphone under option B?
Option B would be they can use, are not permitted to use personal cellphone, tablets, devices, smartwatches, any other device, and/or classrooms during instructional periods. So not instructional periods, they could use them. Always, lunchtime.
Is there an option where they can't use them in the hallways?
That would be option A. That would be not permitted to use personal cellphone, tablets, et cetera, and/or classrooms. In school and/or classrooms. So A is a complete ban, B is a ban on instructional periods, the way I read it.
You want it?
Well, I'm just thinking about the overseer. If it's conditional where they can use it in the cafeteria where they're not talking to each other, but they're on their phones. Is that going to be something that we're going to expect the cafeteria workers to supervise, the teachers? I mean, how's it going to be implemented?
Well, B, they would be allowed to.
Right. But in A, they would.
Be a complete ban, not at lunchtime, not in the hallway. And I suppose that we would leave that up to our administration to develop the plan to carry this out.
Lunchtime's their time. Right?
I mean, essentially, B is what, what is taking place now. The only difference would be we're, we're telling the teachers, you, you can't have the students use their cellphones for an instructional purpose. I mean, we were not, teachers were not giving students free rein.
How much money are we spending on Chromebooks?
Exactly, and that's, I, I feel strongly that we can, we can accomplish what we need to academically with the Chromebooks.
I had a discussion with Dr. Carter about that today, and she says I have absolutely no problem implementing either policy. And she had no problem with a complete ban, that she felt all instructional accomplishments could be done without cellphones.
I mean, I'll, I'll just share an anecdote. I took all of my school stuff off my personal cellphone, June third. I don't check my, when I leave here, I don't check my school email. You all have my cellphone, so if you need to get ahold of me, you'll call me or text me, and I'll get that. But I, I've noticed the break from not checking my work email fifty-seven times when I'm sitting on the couch. So I, I get it. I understand what good a, a break from, I, I don't, I don't have my cellphone on me now. It's locked up in my desk. That way, I, I can't get accused of anyone texting me during a meeting.
So you're saying, you're saying A.
I'm, I'm saying I totally understand A. And living it for the past six weeks, I get A, I understand it.
As the question has come up about the handbooks, is this the only change this year in the handbooks?
I mean, there were some other minor changes, but this, like, for example, Dr. Carter's PBIS program is different from her predecessor, so there's some changes in that. But, you know, from what I saw, this was the most significant change in the handbooks.
And she implemented that prior, or post the handbooks came out last year, so it's an addition. I didn't see that.
And I know the board, we went through a lot of handbook changes my first year here.
Right.
And then a few last year, things that maybe we caught or didn't realize after making those. So, no, we, we knew the work that was already done. We weren't looking to make significant changes.
Well, I would say that it needs to be the same in all, but so it's district-wide.
You're talking about the cellphone use?
Huh?
You're talking about the cellphone?
Can't hear you.
You're talking about the cellphone?
Yeah. What are we talking about?
Well, we were talking about the handbook.
Because of the cellphone?
Right. Yeah.
Trying to confuse me?
Would you like to make a motion?
Well, I'm still trying to get a consensus on A or B. I'm not necessarily... The lunch break is the lunch break. And if they need to call home, you're going to eliminate the ability...
They can go to the office.
Yeah, there, I, I don't think even last year, like, they had fair, fair game to make a phone call from the cafeteria. They would go to the office and say, I, I need to make a phone call. We, we would still accommodate that. No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't accommodate seventy kids coming to the office all at, at one time.
Do what they did back in the day, and we'll make money doing it. Put a payphone in the cafeteria. You had to stand in line.
Call, collect.
Well, no, you had to have that quarter. You thought I was going to say nickel, didn't you?
No, I knew it was a quarter.
I would go with A for my kids. Put it away till after school.
Yeah.
Turn it off.
I agree, just based on the research that's come out about the distraction from learning. I read recently where a teacher resigned because of the cellphones in her classroom, and there was no control. So I...
Well, I guess I would be safe in making a motion for A, district-wide.
Second.
Discussion on that.
And make sure that the kids understand that they can go, if they have to have contact with their parents and vice versa, is to go through the office.
Take the vote.
So this is a motion to amend, including option A, district-wide.
Yes.
And then I go to Mr. Duffy?
And then I go to Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graziosi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Motion carried on the amendment. We'll go back to you, or then now back to eleven point one-five, and the vote on that. Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graziosi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, that brings us up to item twelve, human resources. I move for unanimous consent, items twelve-one through twelve-six. Take your time.
Through twelve what?
Twelve-six.
I just had one question on twelve-three.
Oh, yeah. Go for it, 'cause I had the same question.
Uh, are we having problems getting ticket takers?
I, I wouldn't, wouldn't say it's a problem, but I've definitely seen some emails go out that, hey, we need a ticket taker for tonight's event, so I don't, I wouldn't categorize it as people beating down the doors, but it's not like we're, we're not get, we're not getting anyone. Uh, the ra, the raise is in line with, uh, the three percent raise that, um, BWPSS is, uh, receiving, uh, so that's, that's the rationale from going to fifteen to fifteen forty-five. It's a three percent increase.
Well, that explains why it wasn't fifteen fifty. Why isn't it fifteen fifty?
Because that's more than three percent, so we want it to be consistent.
Do we have a second?
I would second. On the unanimous consent.
Before you take the role, I just want to, you know, again, extend my appreciation to Mr. Wagner. Um, sad to see him go, but he, he is, uh, leaving for a, a promotion, uh, opportunity in another district. Um, so we'll, we'll be looking for his replacement, uh, very, very soon. Uh, twelve point two, because of the growing popularity of those two sports, girls wrestling and boys volleyball, uh, you are approving the creation, you would be approving the creation of the positions, not actually people in those positions yet. That's all I wanted to clarify and mention.
I want to change my second. Can I do that? Would you be willing to pull twelve point one out, so we can have a discussion?
And make him stay?
Pardon?
And make Mr. Wagner stay here?
No, it's not going to make him stay here. But we're going to, we need to have a discussion on the position. Would you be willing to pull twelve point one?
Or you could, I mean, you could do that as part of the discussion now if you wanted to.
Yeah, we can do that.
Oh, and just leave it, huh? That's fine. We'll go with that.
Okay.
Go ahead, Doug.
I made a second.
Well-
Discussion.
Okay, let's state for unanimous consent.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mr. Graziosi? Mrs. Graziosi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Motion carried. We'll back, back to the-
Discussion. I believe now we're open for discussion for those items.
Are you, have you advertised, or are you planning to advertise that as a transportation position? Or would we need to create a business manager's position?
We are, uh, I, I think my initial is to, uh, post it as transportation only, but that wouldn't, that wouldn't force our hand to fill that position. Um, again, we want to, school starting in, in about a month, uh, want to see what, what our options are, but if the board would-
If you interview anybody, make sure they're fully aware-
If, correct, if the board wanted to go in a different direction, this would not prevent us from going in a different direction.
Well, they, they could fill the position, but when you're interviewing, just make sure they're aware that, uh, because they have to, that position requires which license?
Transportation or business manager?
Well, I know the business manager does.
Correct.
But there was another license for the cafeteria workers.
Correct.
So they put that position over cafeteria.
Correct. So, uh, Tim, just for clarification for everyone, Tim's position was director of administrative services, so he oversaw transportation and food services. Our plan right now is to just, uh, post for transportation, uh, to see what's out there, not necessarily needing to be overseeing cafeteria with, uh, Alan Feman being the assistant, uh, food services coordinator. He could report to Megan Foreman, or he could report to me.
He carries the license?
Uh, we, we are waiting for confirmation from OD. Um, there's not a, there, there are other options other than a license, depending on the size of your school, what degree you have, if his degree fits that.
You can work it out.
Yes.
Just make sure that whoever-
Correct.
You interview for the transportation, that, uh, the board might be looking at creating the business manager.
I will keep the board posted.
Mr. Crowe, I believe that this might come under our executive session if you want to talk about that further, because we have, uh, employment dismissal, all of that in our executive session.
I've talked all I need to talk at the moment.
All righty. All right.
So is twelve-one included in this next vote? Okay, thanks.
Ready for me to take vote?
Take the vote, sir.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graziosi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, that takes us to item thirteen, scheduling of the next board meeting. We do have some, um, housekeeping we need to do about schedule, looking for, um, legal counsel, and I want to poll, take a poll with when we could meet very soon to interview the rest or listen for the presentations. We have two tonight, so we can listen to the rest of the presentations. So I would be looking at, uh, Ryan, you have a calendar? So we would, so I'd be looking at next week. In the evening, hopefully. So-
If, if we were doing next week, um, it would need to be Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday. We've got our, uh, admin retreat meetings on Thursday and Friday.
Who would be available on Wednesday?
What time?
What time would you be available? Available, uh-
Twenty-fourth?
Looking at the evening, yeah. I, I would look at the evening.
Well, after, um, after four.
After four?
Wednesday, the twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
You could put me down?
After four?
Mm-hmm.
I'm available?
Can you find your answers? What was it? I'm available. What the hell?
Okay. Four o'clock. Make a motion, I don't know if I need to make a motion for the scheduling of the next board meeting, which would-
Special meeting?
Special meeting, which would be July twenty-fourth, four PM, district offices. I need to take a vote on that or not?
Yeah, we can do that. Mm-hmm.
Uh, I would second it. Takes two to call, it's a special, unless you're president, right?
And we'll, we'll still go through the process of, you know, issuing the special notice and get that out there.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Yeah, since we're talking about meetings, I still am not clear on why the meeting is not livestreamed. I haven't been told there's been a technical difficulty, and I think the public is, I, I, I know the public is wondering why the meetings aren't livestreamed.
Well, I think it's a technical difficulty, because you put it on the wrong format.
I, I-
Isn't that what you said, Wayne?
What, the, the la, the last meeting wa, wasn't livestreamed either?
No, special-
Specials are-
Special meeting wasn't called to be streamed, this one was. So that's an add.
And it just says here, um, streaming will be made available on the district website. It doesn't say live streaming, so we've been doing that as a courtesy. We have a technical problem, I think we-
It was then, okay.
Well, it, it, there's nowhere it says that we have to livestream. It says streaming, so-
What's the difference?
Whether it happens before or after.
What's the-
Live is at the time that it's happening. Streaming is, it's made available after.
Okay.
Does anyone have any problem? Okay? That would move us on.
You want to vote on that?
Yeah, let's vote on this.
Maybe we should.
Yep.
Mrs. Graziosi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Okay, that would bring us to the next, and then the scheduling of the next board, regular scheduled board meeting after that would be August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, six thirty PM, district administrat, administrative office. Streaming of some sort will be ma, made available on the district website. Now-
And going back to eleven fourteen, the, uh, Centaro, that, by scheduling this special meeting-
You can include it on that.
Put that on that meeting.
Okay, thanks, yeah.
You can include it on that, but if we don't have that settled yet, then I can go ahead and put-
Correct.
Make another motion to postpone. Did we vote on the postponement?
Yes.
Okay. That brings us to business items. Uh, we have, I believe, two firms here tonight for legal presentations, legal service presentations. And we would have, um, first person come up, and then we just had a few questions that we would ask.
And I think we're just going to do this-
We're going alphabetical order?
We're going to do these alphabetically. Omar, we're going to have you come up first. And I think we've, we've asked for ten-minute presentations and then questions from the board afterwards.
And we have-
Is this microphone too short for it to work? I'm just saying, do I need to-
Here, you want, here, we have a hand mic.
You have a hand mic? This is always a problem. They always build them too short.
I think Mike was having a-
Omar.
Then your email. I don't think we have-
Oh.
Okay, Omar, will you use the microphone?
Yeah.
All right. First of all, I'd like to thank the board for inviting me to speak tonight. Um, just a little bit of background about myself. I, um, I was previously elected to City Council Hilliard, um, board president, and then currently I'm elected fiscal officer for Norish Township, so I have a lot of background being in your position in terms of how do you operate from, as an elected person and dealing with, um, board dynamics. And I'm currently actually the school-appointed attorney, or the, uh, school attorney appointed for the Southwestern City School District. Um, so I've been, and a lot of, it's kind of interesting, a lot of the comments and things we've been hearing tonight, it's the same problems everybody, everywhere. All boards are struggling with the same issues. Um, so one of the advantages I would bring would basically that I come with a lot of background in board governance, as well as I've got fifteen years of litigation experience, et cetera. So, um, I know a lot of things about a lot of areas to really be able to add a lot of value to this board, should choose to, um, uh, select me to, to work together. Um, based on my recommendation, I actually sent an email, uh, sort of detailing out. I only look for opportunities where I can add a lot of value. Um, and in this particular case, I don't believe, my, my opinion, I'll just, is that the main value that lawyers provide is being able to give, um, attorney-client privilege, clear advice, that may not be what you want to hear, but it's the advice that's from a professional who's here, heard and seen a lot of things, and has a lot of experience, and can really help guide a board without necessarily being in the public sphere, because that's the whole point of attorney-client privilege. So what I would recommend, uh, and also knowing what it takes to run a district, there's a whole variety of legal issues that pop up all the time. There's no way, in my opinion, you're going to be able to decide today or in a board meeting, a public meeting, who's the best attorney out there to handle a civil rights complaint? Who's the best attorney to handle a litigation issue? Who's the best attorney out there to handle whatever? Um, that, that's takes, and, and then basically to see who adds value. There's two core models that districts use in, in that. Essentially, the legal issues that need the day-to-day operation of the district, usually those are just decided by the superintendent. Um, the other model that's handle, that's often done is the, uh, law director model, where basically the board appoints a law director, and then the law director divvies up the work of the day-to-day operations, you know, operational kind of issues, because they have the experience to know this lawyer's best for this, this one's best for that, that kind of issue. So that can be done with one lawyer, and then there's a lot of firms out there, and they know who's good at what, and divvy it up and make it, make it happen, or it could also be done under the superintendent. The main thing that I think that this board would benefit, though, from is the model where you have a, a board council that's directly helping the board through, uh, all the things that need help at the board level. So when I looked at any district, or any organization for that matter, how do you tell when, when an organization or a district is operating at a very high level? There's two things that I look for. The first is, is what I call organizational alignment, meaning is everybody in the district kind of rowing in the right direction? Or is the board kind of going over here doing one thing, and then superintendent's kind of going somewhere else, and then district, you know, teachers in classrooms are doing something different? To what degree is everybody kind of rowing in the right direction? And the second issue is, is organizational culture. Every district out there, every organization out there will have all kinds of flowery language that they put about, "We work together, we have, these are our goals, your objections, our mission," et cetera. The core, the question, though, is, is to what degree does that actually infuse into how the organization actually functions? And when you bring in a, a board council, there, that's a critical piece to bringing both of those, it's, it's obviously takes everybody working together, but having a board council, somebody that you can call upon anytime, day or night, and say, "Hey, uh, you know, this is what I'd like to do, this is what's going on." And having that independent confidential guidance is what helps a board function more effectively, and then also not go too far into other areas. In other words, getting that confidential pushback to say, "Hey, may, you know, now you're kind of overstepping, this is the superintendent's job, let him do his job," you're kind of, or other areas. And that's the, that's the core value you get when you have somebody that you can call upon and get experience. Now, how can somebody convince you of that in a public setting, in a board? I can't answer questions about details of what I've done in the past or things like that. What I'd recommend, and neither can any of the other attorneys, for that matter, and I'm sure there's many attorneys you're going to interview that are, you know, in firms that are exceptional in many areas. Um, so what I, my recommendation I put into the email to the board was, select, um, if you're looking for board council, select several firms and just appoint, uh, and appoint them as board, uh, you know, and essentially get into that engagement where you have an attorney-client relationship with them. And then you can simply ask them for, uh, an opinion letter on something. Come in for one of your executive sessions and work with that, them, and see, are they the right fit to work with you and to take this district to the next level? And also to understand how to not just operationally help, but secondarily mitigate, uh, risks. Uh, because every decision, there's no yes or no, and this is one, I think, is, is critical about the, the lawyer's role, is to crystallize the options and then also the risk of those options. In other words, yeah, you can do this, but this is another, you know, you're, particularly when it comes to the, the threats of litigation, lawsuits, or, or we have this scenario with a teacher and this and that, or whatever it is, that to have your options presented, or policy issues where it's like, "Well, we have this policy." Well, we, okay, well, you can do that, but you could also do this, and these are the risk, uh, uh, you know, of this and this. Now, from the perspective, from a legal perspective, the policy side of whether it's a good decision or bad decision from an educational side of things, that's always the superintendent's role, uh, and the con, the conversation between the superintendent and the board. So the, from the legal side, you come in and say, "These are your legal options, and then these are the mechanics of how to work, uh, you know, to maximize the, the best outcome of the conversation of developing policy that occurs between the two sides, which is the board and, and the, the superintendent." So I kind of wanted to leave it, uh, those are sort of, sort of high-level, uh, you know, for what I can do in a public session in this kind of setting. Uh, you know, uh, my recommendation is, uh, pick a few people, engage them. If I'm one of them, happy to help. Uh, and then if, at an hourly rate, we decide that, "Hey, this is working well, and, and I'm hap, adding a lot of value to how you guys operate and how this district operates," we can discuss a more longer-term relationship and, you know, or anything else now. Um, but in terms of today, making a presentation as to, "I'm the best person," or "Our firm But in terms of today, making a presentation as to, I'm the best person or our firm is the best firm to start doing something in twenty twenty-five. I, you know, that's something, I don't think that's the, you're gonna get the best value for your, I think you're treating, I don't think you're gonna get the best outcome that you think you're gonna get. By going through, selecting a legal process in that way or legal firms, by going, doing it in that manner. So I kind of want to stop there, uh, open it up, see if there's any questions. And go from there.
Well, you answered one of the questions I had was how do you feel working alongside another firm? But I did have another question. So tell me what you know about our district.
Well, um, our, the, huh, it's about the quarter of the size of the district of Southwestern City School District. Um, I haven't spent a tremendous amount of time analyzing the history in terms of, and that's one of the things, there would be sort of a learning curve of whoever, if somebody's coming in to help the board, there's going to be a learning curve involved in that of talking to the board members, understand where the, the history of what's been going on. Um, and, uh, I haven't spent that time up to this point. I have many other things going on all at the same time. And obviously that would be one of the things we'd be sitting down. That's, that's where the attorney-client relationship needs to start. Because the problem is, is let's say there is no attorney-client relationship, I call up a board member and say this or that, or several or whatnot. Anything that's shared is not, there's not attorney-client privilege, and any emails back and forth are all subject to public records. And that's not a good way to get really at what's the bottom line of what somebody wants or what they're trying to accomplish, or what even the problem is, so that you can come in and add value, if that makes sense.
Does. So, um, could you also tell me what experience you have in policy writing for school districts?
Well, I've been working as a, with, uh, policy writing for school districts. I've been working, um, at the district level with Southwest, not, it hasn't been, it's been six months or so. Uh, since the beginning of the year with that, with that district. Uh, I've been working at the school level with, I've had many schools for, I've had, because I, I have a private, private practice, I've been running for fifteen years and I have many school, schools, as individual schools. That I've been helping their boards with all kinds of policy issues, H R issues, all, you know, they're charter schools, all, you know, uh, that kind of thing. But, um, uh, so I can, uh, so that's kind of the formal work. Behind the scenes, I've worked on a lot of different things, policy matters with, within helping school board members, but it hasn't been in a formal capacity, it's been an informal capacity. I also have, uh, work informally at, on statehouse level stuff. I have a lot of, uh, relationships and friends up there as well. And, you know, so there's a lot of things that happens formally and informally, and I hope that answers the question.
Yes. Also, do you work with any other districts that have multiple firms?
Well, yeah, I, I don't think, and, most districts have used different firms for different purposes. Uh, some districts, particularly if they're smaller, they kind of say, okay, this is the one firm and we're kind of should focus on that. But if they have something very specific that pops up, that needs specialized experience, they might bring in a different firm specifically for that problem or that issue. So that's kind of where it becomes, to what, what is the problem you're trying to solve? If right now the board and its operation and function says, hey, we have five policies, we're trying to, we wanna, you know, the pros and cons or some ideas or whatever. Then you engage a couple of firms, get their opinion, get you an opinion letter saying this is what, how I would do it, this is what I'd recommend, that sort of thing. If you're trying to solve other problems, uh, on a more day-to-day function, if they answer, if the question is, for example, on taxes issues, and we're trying to find, most of the times, if you're a smaller district, you're just gonna pick one firm. And they're going to handle all of those kind of things. But for each of those areas, there's ways of doing it more efficiently and more, and, and adequate cost savings. But that requires conversation that doesn't happen in a public setting like this, if that ma- makes sense.
All right. What would you say your number one, um, what your number one strength is or what you, your specialty?
Well, I would say my specialty is, uh, helping boards with board governance issues, uh, as well as, um, like, you know. I, I, it's difficult because I can't go into all of the things I've done in the past because of attorney-client privilege, that's one of the issues. But in general, um, not very many lawyers out there will come with that combination of knowing what it really takes to be an elected official and all the dynamics that work in a board, for a board to function effectively, as well as understanding the whole pipeline of issues that come from there on down. So that how do we bring all that into alignment? How can a lawyer coming in, being able to help the board, get all that into alignment? So I think we've done really well in Southwestern City School District, um, and we've done a lot of, uh, and you can call, obviously, and talk to folks and see. And I believe we can help, uh, you guys in, depending on the capacity and depending on the kind of relationship and role that you're looking for, basically.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question?
Are you following the Groveport Madison school board lawsuit issue?
Groveport Madison, I'm sorry, can you, just give me a hint of the, so many lawsuits out there I'm not paying attention to.
I believe, I believe what's going on is, is two school board members are suing the other three.
Yeah, I've been involved in different, like, again, if you see a problem, there's a thousand failures that happened way before to try to avert those kind of things from even getting that far. So I've been involved in many board fights, many board disputes and things like that, and some that have gone to litigation. But the goal is always to, you know, pull things back, get people back on center, because at the end of the day, what are we all here for? Well, we're here for the kids. Okay, well, how do we get the, the gears turning and get all the emotion and the egos out of the way and say, okay, what is gonna move the ball forward? Where are the compromises? Where are the options? Get people talking, and that's what is so important about that private space of the attorney-client privilege, is you can have those conversations and figure out what the real issues are and untangle the knots that prevent people from working together, prevent, and a lot of times it just, you know. People don't know how to, Robert's Rules of Order, they've not been really trained in it. They don't know how to mechanically express what they're trying to do in a healthy, positive manner for the organization. So it's a matter of working with them through those problems so that you end up, you know, never going that far down that road. But unfortunately, obviously, we have a, a society that's, nobody wants to listen to anybody, everybody's fighting with everybody all the time and employs lawyers. And I think the goal of a lawyer, in my view, is to, you know, put ourselves out of business to some degree, which is how do we untangle things and get things organized in such a way that things are functioning enough that we're not needed very much, and that's another element to this. I think that there would be an initial bit of help kind of getting a bunch of things under, in, in alignment and, and operating at a higher level. And then after that, it would be much less need, uh, unless you had some kind of, you know, thing that popped up, which happens in school districts. I mean, you know, it's every big district always, there's things happening and problems occur, and you need sometimes to call somebody to say, hey, how do we handle this in an effective manner? That, and again, from my view, everything has to go back and a- address those two elements, which is organizational alignment and organizational culture. For instance, if you as an organization essentially turn a blind eye, you've got a problem, and instead of addressing it right away, you wanna, oh, this is a good person and we don't wanna do something, let's let it, you know. If those things are not, that, all those kind of very fact-sensitive and very interpersonal sensitive. You need to have a firm and a lawyer, wo- lawyers working with you that understand the nuances, the subtleties of how to deal with those problems. It's not always about risk mitigation. I mean, oftentimes that's what it is. We're here to try to reduce the li- liability. But the more important issue, slightly more important issue, is also the whole issue of organizational culture in terms of, are we creating a culture where there's accountability? Are we creating a culture where that, where everybody's rowing in the right direction and we, we hold people accountable if they, if they're doing the wrong thing? But at the same time, if somebody's making a mistake, that's, you know, that, are they redeemable, you know, that you know how to sort of be able to triage those issues, those, and, and help staff? Because it's a, it's a team sport. It's not, this is not a one-man show in any, any district, in any law firm, it's always people working together. And it's just, do you have the right team of people? Do you have the right lawyer, working with the board, um, you know, and, and all of this stuff? Working together to create the better outcome that takes of everybody working together. Hope that's helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So. What, what you laid out was we need to, um, basically hire inside counsel. Several firms.
Well, there's several ways to do.
Then you can talk in confidence, but I don't think that allows us, uh, under one, two, one point two two, to go into exact, to have that discussion.
It depends on the topic, right? So for instance, if you want a, a policy, like, let's say you engage an attorney and you say, we want a legal opinion, we have, uh, that we want to do this or that with policy. Give us a, a written opinion, right? That written opinion can be presented to the board as attorney-client privilege, it's not a public document. The board, obviously, if the board wants to discuss policy, a policy choice, they have to do it in an open session. But to have that, uh, attorney-client, and or even a phone call, uh, call up and say, hey, I'd like to, um, you know, have a conversation about this opinion letter you gave us about this policy or that policy. Is it good or bad? Is it, you know, those, that's the interaction that would be under the umbrella of attorney-client privilege. So, and what I was recommending is if you adopt the policy that other districts have, including Southwestern, and I, I emailed it to you, which, which clarifies the role of school counsel. Now, you said a different word, which is in-house counsel. That's a whole nother ball of wax. Yes, you can hire an internal person to be your internal attorney. That's another way to do it. There's more than one way to do this. But that would be basically putting out, instead of something like what you've done in R F P, it would basically be creating a position of in-house counsel. And then have that in-house counsel have the ability to come to you and say, hey, this is beyond my expertise, I need to bring in some other firm to handle some piece, but you have a, a, an in-house attorney. That is another model. You, you can do it that way. I'm simply saying, if you're looking for help, it depends on what problem you're trying to solve and where you're trying to go. If you're looking for board counsel, meaning somebody who's helping and working with the board to help the board function better and more efficiently, more effectively. Then I would recommend, uh, appointing maybe one or several that you can then, and then it's a matter of how you interact with them. And the way we've done it in other districts and in other, uh, circumstances is that basically, board members can call to have attorney-client conversations about what they're trying to do, why and whatever, procedure questions, things like that, or email those questions or whatever. But that, the, that, if, that, that, that response, in other words, an opinion letter is then shared with the whole board, so everybody has the benefit. Now, that, once that's, once you have that, let's say you have an opinion letter from an attorney that says, this and this and this is how I would structure this policy from a legal perspective. Okay? At that point, that's attorney-client privilege, it can only be waived by a vote of the board. So if the board wants to come in and say, hey, we want this opinion letter to be public on whatever the topic is, you can then vote to make that opinion letter a public document. Because it's, the board controls the privilege, not an individual board member. Does that help? Makes sense?
Yeah.
I, I hope I didn't make it confusing.
I, I probably should have used general counsel instead of inside counsel.
Correct.
Okay.
Right. I would say that if you had general counsel that worked with the board, that general counsel can then say, okay, we have, um, a problem, a very specific litigation issue involving our, whatever, H V A C or mold or whatever, or some contract with a, you know, some firm, whatever it is, for, for, you know, solar panels. And I don't want to handle this, or it's beyond my scope, then they can bring in a outside firm to handle that one area. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And I thought that's what we were choosing was general counsel.
Well, it was not clear from the R F P what you're trying to, the goal you're trying to accomplish.
I thought it stated general counsel.
But, yes, but at the same time, it said a lot of other things, um, that made it sort of, are you really, are you wanting general counsel for the board? Or are you talking about, because you can have general counsel that works under the superintendent. The, really, the question is, does the board want to have, be working on a more regular basis with a counsel that's helping to lead your legal issues for the district? Or are you looking to hire, have the superintendent basically hire some, you know, uh, some firm, it could be a general firm, that handles the legal issues for the district, but doesn't necessarily interact with the board on a regular basis? Does that make sense as a distinction?
It should, because that's pretty much what's been going on for twenty-seven years.
Exactly. So if you're trying to change that to a different model, it's totally cool, that's good. But the way to do that, and the be- the better way to do it, in my view, rather than trying to see in a public session where it's difficult to talk about things in, in this way, um, is to engage several, or more than one, and then ask them to give you a, a letter of opinion or interact with them on a personal level or, and, and have a thing where you see what, what is it you're trying, you know, see how they work, how it works, how it works together, does it all gel? Because you want the right individual law, lawyer or firm that's gonna work really well with the board. And you're not gonna get that from just simply a public meeting and listening to nine, ten firms and say, okay, this is the one that's unlikely.
Okay.
Okay, I think that sums it up. Thank you.
That's my perspective.
All right.
Hope, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And it, it looks like we've got a couple folks here. Um, welcome up Brian DeSantis with, uh, Pebble Wagner.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fortunately, the mic's not a problem for me. Growing up, my goal in school was always to be in the second row of a school photo, and, uh, that never happened, but my son made it, so. Boy, thanks for having us tonight. Uh, my name is Brian DeSantis. I'm a partner at Pebble and Wagner, and I have Dan Lauder here as well. Dan is also a partner at Pebble and Wagner. Uh, Dan is actually, has a, uh, a hearing with SERB tomorrow, uh, so I told him I was coming here tonight. I said, why don't you join me so we can make sure we answer all of your questions? Pebble and Wagner has been around for over thirty years. Um, we are an education law firm. And, um, when I explain to people what that means, um, we don't do criminal law or will stress or estates. Even though that's really what parents and family members always ask us to do, um, we are not doing any kind of medical malpractice. We solely focus on serving boards of education. So we have over a hundred school districts across the state of Ohio that we represent, um, and that's what we focus on. So we have fourteen attorneys and seven staff members, and all of us are geared to serving school districts in our different ways. We all have a general practice area that is school law, uh, but within that, there are different areas that we all specialize in. So again, um, if you have a, a complaint in front of SERB, I, I can assure you that Dan will be your person.
And just to clarify, SERB is the State Employment Relations Board, so when there's disagreement between your union and between the Board of Education, those are resolved at the State Employment Relations Board in Columbus, so that's why I was in the neighborhood and agreed to join Brian for, uh, presentation today.
You know, and I came from a much larger firm, a- and moving to a firm where our focus is education law, I think really makes a difference. If you talk to any attorney in our office or even any of our staff members, uh, and you start speaking that language, they already know what you're talking about. And we all move at that same rhythm. Uh, we take a lot of pride in being responsive. I could tell you that I typically get to the office around six-thirty in the morning, um, and that developed after having a superintendent who would call you at five-thirty or six, so. Superintendent Clayton, I don't know what your hours are.
Well, he doesn't have a cell phone, so you don't have to worry about that.
Happen on the drive in.
But we really do pride ourselves on being highly responsive. Uh, so as your needs arise, we are there for you. You know, a lot of times those situations come up, you know, it might be late in the evening, early in the morning, and we think it's really important that you have that trust and that confidence in your counsel to be able to contact them, to answer any questions that you may have, or to, to resolve an issue before it becomes a real problem. I could tell you, I remember last year, we had an issue where it was a Thursday night, uh, we became aware of, of a problem that was occurring. We had to get, uh, some research going on what kind of issues and exposure the district might have. Um, we also had to get statements ready in case it, it became a very public matter, and we also had to set up meetings. So it was a Thursday night, because I remember I was watching Thursday night football, and, um, by ten o'clock that evening, we had all the questions that we need to do to understand our exposure, ready to go. We had statements ready. The next morning, we were in the district talking, meeting with the administration, uh, the administration, uh, talked to the board. We were all on the same page and we were able to resolve that matter very quickly. So I think one of the benefits again is that, um, a- as a firm that's committing to serving public education, we all understand when those matters arise and we have that flexibility to really serve you as issues come up. You know, the other thing is that, you know, we meet deadlines. We get work done on time, and there are no excuses. If there's something that comes up, you need it done, we'll make sure it's to you, it's the board. You know, that's part of the trust and that relationship between the board and council, that's very important to, um, to make sure that you establish that. We also, again, pride ourselves in how we approach work. Like I said, there will be a primary contact, um, that could be me. If after a while, you find that, that relationship's not working and you prefer to work with Dan. Dan can also, uh, to come in, become your primary contact. And then with, if, our firm, we have different specialties, so I don't know, Dan, if you want to.
Yeah, so just for example, um, I draft board policy for our firm, and we do board policy work for approximately thirty, maybe a little bit more now. I know we're onboarding two more school districts, so that's an area of expertise for me, that professionally, a lot of my practice over the past, uh, you know, decade has been dedicated to that. So if it's a policy issue, it comes to me, but if I have a client who asks me a question that's unique to an area of law that Brian has a lot of familiarity with, I'm going to defer to Brian and say, Brian, I, I think that you'd be best served to help this, uh, school district out and seek his expertise. So whereas. So whereas we both have clients that we spend a lot of time with and serve most directly, by no means do we ever hesitate. If there's something that another attorney at the firm would be stronger at handling, then we, we seek their assistance openly.
You know, we also, I think it's important that the board has confidence in its counsel. You know, we have no agendas, we're here to provide you legal advice. As I've often explained to my kids, my own personal advice isn't worth a whole lot. I said, if it was up to me, we'd have like turkey and mashed potatoes at school for lunch every day. I said, but no one pays me for that. What you're paying for is that, that counsel and the understanding of, if we make this decision, what are these potential outcomes? And I think that's really important to have that expertise, and again, we can draw upon our experience in understanding that.
Yeah, I would say what's unique about Pepple and Wagner is, given that we represent over 100 school districts, we have the perspective of the, the situation that a board can be in if you're in an urban district, a suburban district, a rural district. We know what impacts you, and we know that the decisions each board wants to make are unique, and they reflect the needs of that community. And so our perspective is to allow you guys to make that decision, as all you board members were elected by your community to do, find the best legal route to achieve those objectives, and to give you the truth about, you know, here are potential consequences of the decisions that you are making and the route you want the board to take. Because that's for you guys to decide, we know how to get you there, and that's our role.
And I think the other thing too is, I, I grew up in northeast Ohio, I still live there now. My family's wife is from the county. My father actually has a horse farm in Delaware County, and he was, one of his crowning achievements was winning the Jagat a couple of years ago. So I get that. My sister-in-law lives in Sunbury, so I'm familiar with the community, and I think as I was telling Dan, they have to have more holidays now in Sunbury than even in our own home. So I, I think part of that experience, or developing that relationship, is getting to know the district, and certainly there's a lot more to do. And I think a lot of those communications we would want to have to understand what the district's going through, what areas you have concerns, and how we can assist and provide guidance in doing that.
Happy to open it up to questions.
What are you setting our media tonight, and what do you think? We running it okay? We running it legal?
You know, I think the last attorney said, a good attorney will only say something that's attorney-client privilege, so.
Going to hold off on analyzing that. I would say a lot of the issues that you guys are addressing and confronting, we see at a lot of districts, so it's, this is all very healthy, normal reflection of the state of education in the, in Ohio, and you guys are not unique in that respect, and having to address the, the cellphone issue, right? There's, there's a perfect example of something that's, you know, the legislature has brought up, and it's in the revised code, now you understand that you have to take action on it. You know, I've had to address that through policy, and I've addressed that for, for many, many clients, so it's, you're doing well.
And I think it's our understanding and looking at the, the information you provided about the district, that it's a growing district, and it's a very difficult time right now as a, a district that's growing in size, you know, what that means for transportation, and firing more drivers, doing declarations of the practicality, there is a lot that goes into that. And the way you're funding is through the state, you're growing, but that's always being reflected in what's coming back to you. So there's a lot of unique challenges that we could see, that, again, as a, as a growing district that you're going through, but again, you're not unique in that regard.
Okay, well, you've actually answered three out of about four of the questions I had, but do you have anyone that sits in-house or sits in board meetings, or have you, how much experience with that, with that do you have?
In terms of one of us sitting here?
Yeah, someone or...
We are regularly at board meetings. That's, that's sort of a part of the job. My entire career is showing up at board meetings to address specific issues. Sometimes you're brought onto an executive session to address pending or imminent litigation. Sometimes you're just there to provide general advice. Brian has done the same thing. Everyone in our, our practice regularly attends board meetings.
Yeah, and I'd say there are some larger districts that will have that separate counsel for the board, but to be clear, we are board counsel, we represent the board, we speak on behalf of the board, so even though we might have a more regular relationship, but we talk on a daily basis with the treasurer or the superintendent, we still speak to the board. So again, it's not uncommon for us to be at board meetings. You know, on, on every meeting basis, maybe not as much, but as matters come up where the board thinks it's warranted, if there's a controversial policy that you're thinking about considering, or you want to have that discussion, or have us talk about a change in law, whether it's a cellphone policy.
Student discipline is another great example, where you would enter into an executive session to address, you know, the expulsion of a student. You may want to have an attorney on hand for that, particularly if that student or the parents there with a lawyer. So there are a variety of situations in which we would be present at a board meeting to assist you guys with those really important legal decisions that you have to confront.
All right. Well, tell me anything unique you know about our district.
Unique?
Or anything?
Well, you know, I, it was interesting, I saw that you were created in 1950, so if, is that my correct understanding of how the...
That's one of the...
The...
Well, he was there, so I don't...
Sunbury, Big Walnut was created by joining Sunbury, Delena, Harlem, and the urban area, or the rural area in 1950, actually 49.
So, and I had a note to ask my grandfather-in-law, who played basketball, what the alignment was back when, he still talks about this all the time. So that was one of the things I wanted to talk to him about. So I mean, that's unique. I think, again, your growing size, although maybe not as unique around the Columbus area, is still pretty unique. You're going to be growing for a sustained period of time. You know, I think, I could tell you, we did look at your negotiated agreements between the unions, just to get a general understanding of where you are, and there is, you know, again, not to get into that now, but we reviewed that. We took a, a quick review at your open enrollment policy, just to see what kind of variations you have. Are you bringing students into the district? Are we limiting that?
We just changed that.
Okay. And again, I think that's one of the things, there's another district that's very similar. It's actually one of the fastest-growing in the state, that we were talking about, how do we strategize bringing students in versus meeting obligations for transportation and serving them? So that was kind of giving us more of an insight to what the school district is going through.
Just adding to that, I would say, whereas you guys are absolutely unique, Big Walnut is unique, I would just say that with the experience of our firm exclusively doing what we have done for 30 years, there's no problem that you guys could confront that we wouldn't know how to address, that we wouldn't have experience addressing, at least some lawyer at our firm. And I think that, you know, focusing in education law exclusively, the way that we have done, allows us to be that resource for you.
And I think the other thing too, and I'll speak on behalf of Dan here, Dan drafts our policies, and, you know, every board is different, and I, I think sometimes it's a mistake to think that every board should adopt the same policy, so.
Yeah, well, he's talking about, talking about policy, so that's, that's my wheelhouse. So our perspective when it comes to board policy is that we should keep it bare bones, and that policy should reflect what the Ohio revised code requires and/or the administrative code, or perhaps it's federal law, but essentially just that. And to not build in unique processes or procedures on top of what's required by law, because you're not served by that. We don't want the board or the administration to be sort of legislated into a corner unnecessarily. We would prefer that you have the full discretion that's available to you under law, and to only have in policy the things that are required of you, which is why we don't also do, for example, administrative guidelines to accompany our policies. Our policies are all, they include all the requirements that you have to meet under the law, so you're not paying for both a board policy service and an administrative guideline. And your superintendent doesn't have to look at a board policy manual, that's, you know, 1,500 pages, and then an administrative guideline, that's 1,500 pages, to figure out the answer to one question. Our thought is, have it be a true resource that reflects exactly what's required under law, and then leave it to you guys to decide, you know, what that should look like for Big Walnut, which could be radically different than, you know, an intercity school that we represent, or a different suburban school, or a rural school. So it's, it's, there's, there's room for being unique, and that's where I think, you know, Big Walnut can reflect its own values, is in its policies that way.
And I think to, to kind of add to what Dan was saying, you know, you start with what the policy says, and then there's that communication of what else should be in there to make it reflect what you want. If there's any changes that are made to a policy, it will be made by an attorney in our office. So we would stand behind any of the changes to the policy. It's not as though if a change is made, we're going to shy away from it. It will be reviewed by us, we'll make sure that it's consistent with what's required by law as well.
What about when individual board members reach out for counsel? Do you respond to the individual board members with privilege, attorney-client privilege?
Yeah, we, typically, we would set up an arrangement of how that communication works, and that really does vary from board to board. So some boards will have all communications to go through the president and the superintendent and treasurer. There are other boards that have a little bit more flexibility in how we take calls, or if there are certain concerns that are being raised, as long as there's the understanding that, you know, if you're getting information, and then, you know, usually our practice is, if you have a question, to make sure it gets distributed back to the entire board, so everyone's on the same page.
Yeah, the line of communication can be unique to the board in general, direct communication with the superintendent and the treasurer, and then, for example, if you're collectively bargaining and a member of the board is on that team, then that would be another sort of direct line of communication, just because, you know, if we're sitting at the table with you, the bargaining table, you're going to have that correspondence, so it's almost a natural outgrowth of that. But, you know, each line of communication is unique to the district, and it would be something that'd be worked out.
Any more questions?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one question, what's your in-law-grandfather's name?
So it's attorney-client privilege, that's a good one. We'll talk to the outside, I won't, what, uh...
Oh, you're trying to trick them.
Attorney-client, right? He may have played with my grandpa's younger brother.
Okay, well, that closes up number 14. We are on to number 15, executive session, 15.1. It is recommended that the board enter executive session as permitted by ORC, Section 121.221, to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, compensation of a public employee or official.
So moved.
The ORC number is 121.22. There isn't a 221.
Sixty. All right.
Didn't even charge for that one, did you?
Thank you.
I will second that.
I think you already did. Take the vote.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Take five minutes.
Only, only five?
Okay, 10 minutes.
Bike or go home?